Good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting, September 13th, 2012. Please take the roll.
Okay, Mayor Ron is absent. Clerk Ksimsky is absent, and I wanted to let the board members know the reason she's absent tonight is she, as some of you may know, she's District Two Representative for the Illinois Clerks Association, and they had a meeting tonight that, you know, she regretted not being able to be here, but wanted me to convey that to you. She'll be back on Monday. Trusty Emery?
Here.
Trusty Fleming?
Here.
Trusty Klebanow is absent. Trusty Nero?
Here.
Trusty Scott?
Here.
Trusty Seneca?
Here.
And then we have myself, Andrew Searle, Attorney Zemanak?
Here.
Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Somewhere, oh, there he is. We have Deputy Chief Brenza?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
And Finance Director Parker?
Here.
And Fire Chief Weiss?
Here.
All right, everyone, please rise, join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have an open forum area, which residents can speak. We request that you keep your comments to three minutes, and once we are done with the open forum, after that, that portion will be closed to public comment unless there is something that we have on the agenda for the public to comment on. And who do we have up first? Okay, we have Bob Mueller, 44 West 59th Street, Department D, Westmont, Illinois. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. We're going to talk again about home rule. I sent you the Tribune article from Sunday's paper called Townsborough You Pay. I hope you all had a chance to read it. It pretty much refutes everything that Ron has posted on the Village Board, or on the Village website, so hopefully everybody had a chance to read it. It was the front page of the Tribune, and it's on the web. We can always give you a copy of the article. We're still waiting for the Village Attorney to go on record as far as whether the town can spend Village money to promote home rule. I've got a FOIA in, maybe the answer's in that. We'd like to also mention that, again, Ron offered to post opposing viewpoints on the web that has since been reneged on. One of the articles in the suburban trust is about, or in the suburban life, is about trust, and that's what this vote is going to be about. Do we trust this board to be an autonomous body? I'm very pleased to know Terry Pastica, who really was a major contributor to the article, and that's what we're voting on. Can we trust you? One of the big problems with home rule is the potential for abuse of power. I think we saw that last week when I got escorted out. So tonight, what I would like to do is challenge Ron Searle, or anyone here on the board, to take one of your meetings, and let's have a debate. Let's let the people of Westmont see both sides of the issue. If other people want to participate, you know, I think we should invite them as well, but we need opposing viewpoints. So I would like to have one of these sessions be a debate about both sides of the issue. You know my address, get back to me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Well, first of all, it would not be appropriate for us to debate-
Right.
...to take a position one way or the other, so I think that's the answer to that question.
Ron, you have already.
Again, that's-
Look at your write-up.
That's an opinion.
It's flattered.
Sir, sir, we're responding to your comment, okay?
Ron is supposed to be responding and writing to my comments.
All right, let's just move on to the next one.
No, never mind.
Move on.
Thank you, thank you. Your three minutes are up. Thank you very much. Bob Reed, 215 West Trowby.
Hi, my name's Bob Reed. I live on Trowby. My concern is the one-way sign in the one-way street at Trowby and Grant. The sign that's there is pretty small. I brought this up at the school board meetings before, and they told me to come to see you. I guess you do the signs, I don't know. But it's not only the sign that's small, I see, the last two days in a row, I see a school bus going down the wrong way. I see a car following it going down the wrong way. I lived down there, and once I was guilty of it. I went the wrong way, and I did get stopped, but as soon as I realized what I did, this, but that was after summer vacation and driving back and forth up and down that street constantly, you get used to it. My concern is, is the sign that's there is not big enough. It's a little sign that's in a right-hand corner, and it's the only sign that's there.
Is this the sign dealing with Miller School?
Yes.
That time ago?
Yes, probably.
I thought there was an actual barricade that blocked off one side of the half of the street.
I know the other schools put a barricade.
When we first instituted the program, there was a sign and a barricade there. The janitor was responsible to go out and put that there, and it was chained. We got complaints from the residents it was interfering with their lawn maintenance, as well as the school. We really didn't have time for the janitor to go out and put the barricade out. We also had a orange flag, which drew attention to the flag, to the sign, and that has since faded and worn and disappeared a long time ago. So what I will do is, on the enforcement part, tomorrow morning, Deputy Chief Brenza and I will talk with our officers, and we will do the enforcement. Beginning of the school year, let's get it right at the beginning of the year rather than later, so a couple enforcement, a couple traffic stops, a couple warnings, should put the end of that. And I'll talk with Director May on the signage as well, to see if there's anything we can do.
I think it's just-
Chief?
I mean, isn't, can't we, can't we go ahead and have another sign made like that, and necessarily not have to stay out there? I mean, I know how it used to be, but I mean-
The question is manpower and putting it out, and the school, again, was doing that and chose not to, and we could reopen our talk with them.
Can we revisit that with them? Because I believe Manning does one, and it's the same district.
Yes.
Holy Trinity does it, and we've, you know, we've kind of gone out on a limb to do this, this special consideration for the students. I, you know, I'd kind of like to see them-
And I know-
As you say, it's an unsafe situation if a school bus and some people are following down the wrong way.
Well, if the sign was bigger, or on both sides, had one on one side-
Or if somebody could just see it, yeah.
Or it's more noticeable. It's not really that noticeable.
Yeah. Public Works Director May is-
Why don't you with the, with the school bus and-
Lining up.
I will be quiet. After the school bus, there is a handicapped child that lives there, and that bus needs to go against the wrong way to line up to pick that child up.
Okay.
And we've made an exception for that bus and that bus only. However, monkey see, monkey do, the one follows through. So we'll take care of the enforcement part, and I'll be quiet while Steve talks about the sign.
Okay, thank you.
We'll certainly go look at it, but I kind of wanted to describe how it was set up. We were calling it a one-way sign, and it's actually a do-not-enter in the westbound direction, and there is a sign permanently mounted, it stays there, and it's on the corner. And because it was off on the side and the, and it's timed, the concern was, like, you know, being reported, is that, is it being ignored, or is it even being paid attention to? And that's when there was a second sign that was on a barricade that was pulled out. Now, a lot, all schools that have the, that have the, what, the right, and the code already to close the street during school hours, those are always adjacent to school property, and they do pull that out and put the barricades out, but it's right next to the building. This is a half a block down from the school property, so not only was it, I don't know if it was the burden of actually doing it, but somebody had to go all the way down to the corner to pull the barricade out to add the second sign that was on there. So, and it's, and it is just a do-not-enter. It's technically not a one-way, so when people leave the parking lot, everybody's encouraged to arrive from the same direction and travel out the same direction for ease during the school pickup, but it's technically not a one-way.
Can we change the colors? Can we make it bigger? Can we do something that would make it more visible?
You have to use a standard sign. We could hang another flag on it, but I don't, I wouldn't even say that it's not noticed. I would say that, you know, if there's not a likelihood of being caught, it's probably ignored, is more often than-
The issue with the janitor, the janitor had to stop what he was doing in the morning, while put the sign there, unlock it, unchain it, put the sign out, and then after school was done, before he go over there, they had to go back and reverse the process. And I know that was part of the problem with that sign, but we'll revisit it, and we'll look at it.
Well, I guess, to your point, is, didn't they come to us and ask us to do this?
Yeah, they did.
Okay, so now, if the other schools are capable of doing this, I think if this is a request they've made, I think maybe they might want to consider how they're going to handle this.
Yeah, maybe we can just work with them and just kind of reopen that door and see if there's a chance that they can-
And we'll report back to the board.
And then enforcement, as you said.
Yes.
Okay, okay, sir. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Mr. Mike Lowney, 514 Blackhawk Drive. Good evening, sir, how are you?
All right, how are you doing?
Just fine, thank you.
I came today to talk about issue with Standard Market, right across the street from me. My driveway there is at the entrance to their parking lot. It's their smoking or break area. You always see a group of them standing there, right across the street, and I've sent pictures to you all showing, showing that. They're standing, smoke, and on the phone, and sometimes they're sitting on the curb, which doesn't seem like a very good thing to do. And we've, my wife twice called Vince Priest just to leave a message about this issue back in the spring, never responded to either one, and to me, this is kind of a continuing pattern that's been going on, where we had the lights on after 10:00, and it took a couple months to get that resolved. I know, I think Shannon Malick could fix that, she did a nice job on that for us. Then we had the parking in the street when the restaurant opened. Their employees are parking all down the street, and that was, of course, resolved recently. Thanks for that. And now we have this issue that's been going on with the, with their break area. Obviously, they don't seem to want them taking their break anywhere near their store. You know, they could do it by their loading docks or someplace else, but not really across the street from my house. I don't think anyone else would want that in front of their house either.
Well, we'll be more than happy to contact them again, depending on where they're standing. It may be public property, but I'm sure that we will contact Vince again about this, and they've usually responded to our comments very well. We'll express the concerns in that, and I'm sure if we have pictures, we can send that to him too, and see what kind of a response we get, and then in turn, contact you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Sure.
You said that you had reached out, or your wife had contacted Vince?
Wife had called, left messages, Vince twice.
Okay, do you want us to set up a meeting in which you would participate?
If you want, if you think that would help, but like I said, we tried to talk to him twice and didn't respond, and I had said to, and I know to Trusty Scott, I had said something in the spring about it, and I know some of my neighbors, I think, have made some comments about it to the village, especially my next-door neighbor. And so, like I said, you know, we, and didn't hear anything, and so, and I've been, due to family matters during the summer, wasn't able to address things, but now I'm looking, I want to see if we can get something done with this.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Deputy Chief Brenza, Westmont Police Department.
Good evening. I'm just, come here as a reminder that we have a Citizens Police Academy class starting this, later this month, September 26th. It's open to all the residents, or anybody that works within the Village of Westmont. We'd love to see as many people there as possible. We plan on putting on a good class and having a good time. Applications are available downstairs here at the Village Hall or at the Police Department, and we ask people to have them in by February 21st at 5:00, if possible, so we know how many people we have.
What's the date of it again?
It is, the class is going to start on Wednesday, September 26th. It's going to run for nine weeks. We're going to skip the week of Thanksgiving, but it'll be a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I think that covers all the open forums we have. Okay, moving on to reports. The mayor did not leave anything, but I'll just take a quick moment to say that Sunday's event at the police station at 500 North Cass for the 9/11 ceremony was very well done. The two speakers that you had, especially the gentleman who was at the crash site in Pennsylvania, I found that rather enlightening in how they described everything and went through that. But I will say to both of you, the event was absolutely fantastic. There were quite a few people there, well-attended, and do thank you for all the hard work and effort that you've put into it, and look forward to having it again each year. Just a quick moment, if you could note that acting-
Community Development Director Malick.
Director, you've joined the meeting. Thank you. That's all I have. Trusty Seneca?
No clerk, no attorney, no manager?
No attorney.
No clerk, okay, that's good. Thank you. Yeah, just, oh, what are we doing? Okay, I thought, I wondered why you were going out of order. I was like, it was a trick.
I know, he's got too many things.
It was a trick.
Four things.
Bears.
Four?
A request for executive session of personnel following the meeting, and I passed out two proclamations that I would ask if we could add to the agenda for Monday. The first one is, we've done this annually, is a proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and I believe we'll have a representative here from the Downers Grove Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution Organization to, to, you know, accept the proclamation, I believe. And the other one is, actually a request that came from the Illinois Municipal League. There's an effort to sort of publicize the idea of, you know, texting is a real safety concern for people driving, so they have asked communities to consider a proclamation, this is called No Text On Board, and we would declare September 19th, excuse me, as No Text On Board Pledge Day. And the idea is to encourage all drivers to pledge to never text and drive again, but start on that particular day. So unless you have any objections, I would ask that we add that to the agenda. And then I wanted to just mention, there is information on the website now concerning the public meetings that we have set up, the informational meetings regarding home rule. As I mentioned before, this issue is going to be on the November 6 ballot. I won't go and read all of the different dates, but I would urge people that are interested to take a look at that, and if you can attend one of those meetings, that would be great, so we can help, you know, get information out about what it means. That is all I have.
Trusty Seneca?
Thank you. Just want to remind everyone that Saturday, September 15th, the Chamber is hosting the Pet Promenade at Ty Warner Park, and it's the first of hopefully many, so it starts around 10:00 in the morning, so come out and see all the pets, and better yet, bring your pet. There'll be prizes and lots of fun. Also wanted to congratulate the WSEC on a fun rock and road, rock and roll road rally last weekend. It was, it was hysterical, it was a lot of fun, and it was great, a great way to showcase so many of our businesses. We stopped at 15 different Westmont businesses, well, not all of them were businesses, some were parks in other locations, but the greater portion was actually going into businesses from 63rd Street all the way up north to the, you know, the health corps. So it was a great chance to get in and talk to some of those businesses and to kind of showcase them a little. It was a lot of fun. And I'm just saying, my team came in third, just so you know, third place. That was really fun. It was a miracle. And then the last thing, I just wanted to congratulate both of our chiefs on the Day of Remembrance on September 9th. It was just so well done and so well-attended, and the speakers, everything about it was lovely, and really did a nice job. Thank you so much. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Trusty Scott?
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that there's Electronic Recycling tomorrow at Ty Warner Park. And that's it?
Thank you. Trusty Emery?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Trusty Nero?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Nothing.
Moving on then, unfinished business. Temporary moratorium extension. Board to consider in ordinance extending the temporary moratorium on development in an area commonly known as northeast acres.
Good evening. We're passing out a copy in color of the moratorium area, which I know you're all familiar with, but just to help facilitate the conversation tonight. The moratorium was approved in 2010 as part of the study that was underway at the time from Christopher Burke Engineering. The thought was that the lot coverage would be reduced to 30% in this particular area, and the ordinance was given a one-year period, if not extended, it would sunset. A year ago, we were before you, explaining that nothing substantially had changed since the time of that study, the initiation of that study and the implementation. An extension was granted a year ago, and we're basically back at the same place, so there's not been anything that has changed that would necessitate any revision to the ordinance at this point. The, the position is just that staff maintains it would still be valuable to keep this in place for that additional time period, so a formality, I believe, just because otherwise it would be sunsetting.
Yes, when the moratorium was set up, it was set up, you know, intentionally in one-year increments, so that it can be reviewed each year to see how progress is made towards, I'll just call it the general stormwater management of the area in the moratorium boundary. The, as far as the public improvements and the minor maintenance certainly, you know, happened initially, but there's been no large public improvement. We did do a, besides the village-wide study, there was a, you are aware that there was a second study that concentrated just on this neighborhood and this area, and we have identified the, the need for a certain level of protection, and what we would use as our standard, a 100-year storm. So we know what the master planning is for the area, whereas we have not had the budget ability to construct any public improvements towards this. There are, have been, you know, you could speak to, there's been private development that has gone on that we have used the terms of the study or the, the needs and have partnered people up and are working towards increased stormwater management in the area as development occurs. So moratorium's kind of a strong word saying, makes it sound like you can't build at all, and it's not that you can't build, it's just that the parameters are just tighter.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business. Westmont High School Homecoming Events. Board to consider in ordinance approving a sound amplification permit using Village equipment, use of Village equipment, a partial street closure of Cass Avenue and Melrose Avenue, and a code waiver to allow a bonfire, bonfire for Westmont Homecoming Parade and Bonfire Event on October 4th, 2012, from 6:15 till 9:00 PM.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tom Demay, staff member and senior council sponsor for Westmont High School. I'm here today to ask for permission and your approval for the set premise that you just mentioned for our annual homecoming events. Our parade, starting on October 4th, Thursday, at 6:30 PM, will, the route will start at Burlington and Cass Avenue, heading north on Cass to Melrose, which then will turn east to Warwick. From there, we will disperse and head towards Westmont High School for our bonfire activities. We will be meeting at the Water Tower parking lot to gather and to get into place for a smooth and prompt start at 6:30.
Chief?
Pretty routine.
You obviously have some comments.
I just have one request for correction of a word in, in the ordinance where it says code waiver. We want to take out waiver and make sure it's just a code permit.
Just code permit?
Right, because we're not waiving anything special for this. They're meeting all the requirements to, to, to request a bonfire permit from our, through our fire marshal.
And I think when it was drafted, at least thinking historically, there is a code section that prohibits the burning of open combustible material, and I think that is the code section that was cited for a waiver from that, as opposed to a code section that specifically says you can have a bonfire with a permit. Is there such a section that I, that I missed that says you can have a bonfire?
I just, I reviewed this with Fire Marshal Daniels today, and when I read it to him and questioned him, he said it's not a waiver, it's requesting a permit for the bonfire, and they're following all the state fire marshal's requirements. So I just wanted to bring that, if it's, you know, if you understand it's-
I'll, I'll look carefully and see, because if we don't have a code provision that sets up a permit process for bonfires, then what we're really doing is waiving a section that prohibits large combustible material from going up in flames like this.
Okay.
And if maybe we want to work on a bonfire permit in the future, you know, we can add that language to the ordinance.
Okay. We will be using all precautions. We have a fire engine out there, with fire personnel would stand by, so we have all the safety measures in place.
Great. Pretty routine. We've done this many years.
Yes.
I did want to just quickly add, there will be a change this year to the parade in which we will not be using the fire engines or the dump trucks for the parade participants to ride in. It was decided through our insurance pool that that was no longer practice, that we could continue. However, we did find a remedy. The Park District stepped up to the plate, and they have some trailers that they use for the hay rack rides and such. They're going to get them ready a little bit earlier this year and provide them for the parade.
Oh, nice. That's good. Very good.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Nope, sounds good.
Look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good.
North Grant and North Adams Water Main Project. Board to consider in ordinance awarding bid for North Grant and North Adams Water Main Project and authorizing a construction contract with the selected bidder.
He's asleep at the suite.
When I turned in the agenda item, this Water Main Project was put in there as a placeholder because we didn't know who the low bidder was yet. We did open the bids yesterday, and we had, out of the nine companies that took out plans and specifications, there were six bids. The low bidder was Arcon Construction Incorporated from Addison, Illinois, the amount of $774,700. This is relative to the engineer's estimate, which was over, well, approximately $950, $951,000. That's been probable cost. Arcon also did our Quincy Street work, so we have direct experience with the contractor. They, you have the, passed out the letter of recommendation from the design engineer who read the bids, and he's gone through them all and has found no discrepancies, so we're asking that you award this contract, so we can start immediately this-
Sounds like a plan.
-next month.
Okay.
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Aperis Dockview Professional Services. Board to consider in ordinance approving an agreement between Village of Westmont and Aperis Dockview to permit the collection of dissemination of traffic crash reports completed by the Police Department.
Good evening again. I'm here on behalf of the Police Department, seeking permission from the board to enter an agreement with Aperis Dockview to use their e-crash solution for our officers to electronically, electronically create traffic crash reports. These will then be sent to iDOT and Dockview at no cost to us. For the past couple of years, we've been using the Illinois Department Transportation's Mobile Crash Reporting Program for electronic crash reports. Unfortunately, that program never really worked for us, and we had to stop using it, and at this time, iDOT has stopped supporting it altogether, and that's where Aperis now has stepped in. Aperis recently entered into a partnership with Dockview, whom we've been using through the Police Department since February 2011 for dissemination of our traffic crash reports. If this agreement is approved, our officers again will have the avail, 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 availability to create an electronic traffic crash report right from their cars and send it in for approval. Our supervisors will have the ability to look at that report and approve it. Once they approve it, it will automatically be sent to the Illinois Department of Transportation and to Dockview for dissemination via the internet. Aperis believes that they will be able to connect their software with our in-house software, and that all the information officers entered on these traffic crash reports will automatically populate into our record management system. Right now, our employees in our records department have to take the time of each exit report, sit down, and manually enter this, so that will save us a lot of manpower time on doing that. The Dockview part of this partnership allows us to collect- The Dockview partners partnership allows us to collect, store, and disseminate our traffic crash reports online via the internet 24/7 on their secure website. The cost for this, for a party to use this, is $13. Out of that $13, $5 of that comes back to us. That's a charge that we have always charged. Dockview's charge on this is $6, correct me, $7.25, which go to Dockview or Apres for their services, and 75 cents of that will go to the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association. A person, an insurance company, a law firm, has, still has the opportunity, if they don't want to do, buy it online, to come into the station or purchase it through the mail and just pay the normal $5, and not the $13, so they still have that availability if they wish to do so. An additional feature that's coming out with this too, which we haven't had previously, is we'll be able to upload photographs from traffic scenes that our officers take, which we will make available also online. That would then be sold at a predetermined price that we haven't decided on yet, and we hope to do so soon, but photos will be purchased as a group. They will not be sold at one at a time, it'll be depending, if there was one photo or 100 photos, it'll be whatever that price was set ahead of time, and that's what we would sell them for. Right now, our photos are sold at our station, they're a dollar for a digital photo, dollar for a DVD, it's 75 cents for an audio tape, so we're just looking to make this more uniform and do everything online and give everybody that option to get it that way. Although Apres is new to the state of Illinois, they've been providing this e-crash program to thousands of law enforcement agencies across a number of states. Some of those states are Indiana, Kentucky, Tennessee, Georgia, Florida, Nebraska, and Washington. So they are around, they've been around for a while, and they are endorsed by our Illinois Chiefs of Police Association. I've already spoke to our IT department about this, and they support it, they've looked into it, and they're in favor themselves. So just a quick overview of it, if we, if it is approved, it's a simple implementation, a fast documentation of crash reports for us. It's a direct immediate reporting to iDOT and Dockview e-commerce. It provides us with easy street draw diagramming software. It's safe and secure, so you can view it, save it, print it, and even email reports and photos of crashes online. The entire solution is accessible to the public 24 hours a day, and if I forgot to mention it, it is free. And if you've ever seen handwriting of some of our officers in most things, at least now the reports are very legible along with the diagrams, so. Happy to take any questions if you have any on this.
Deputy Chief, explain the, the cost of the service is free, but what's the $13, and then recouping five for a copy of a crash report?
Well, as I've mentioned now, if you, it has been by law and statute, we sell our accident reports for $5, so anybody can come into our station, it has been for a number of years, they come in, we sell them for $5. It's free in that it's not going to cost us anything to implement this program. And again, it, it's not mandatory, people can still come in and do it and get it for $5, it's just making it available to anybody out there, people that don't live in our town, and mostly to insurance companies and law firms who want to obtain it. For this, it's a convenience. Instead of having to write a check out each and every time they come in, Dockview does a billing with them. They bill them for once a month, whatever, so if it's just throughout a company, state farm, if they want these reports, no matter how many reports they buy from Dockview, from whatever agencies, they get one bill from Dockview at the end of the month, billing them for all their reports, so it's convenience for these companies to get those reports.
What's the $13?
The $13, that's what they're going to pay. Out of the $13 that they'll pay to get one report, $5 of that comes back to the Village of Westmont.
Oh, I get it.
To pay us for our normal fee, and again, the $8 is going to pay for the remainder, which will be the Apres part of the, the feature, letting us do it electronically, and out of that $8.75 of that goes to the Illinois Department Chiefs of Police Association.
Okay.
So no FOIA violation because the public still, as, as you said, can go right to the police department, do a FOIA for traffic crash report, get it for $5, but if they want the added convenience of going online and getting it, paying a little bit more, they have that option also.
Correct.
It's a one-year contract that automatically renews, because we can terminate at any time if we're unhappy with their services.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go into executive session, could I ask Ms. Malick to please come to the podium and make a couple of announcements? Thank you.
I apologize you didn't have this information earlier, I got stuck, stuck at a medical appointment, so I just wanted to provide two brief updates. There is a finalized committee agenda for the code enforcement and for the Building and Zoning Committee. That meeting will take place on Monday evening at 6:00 PM here in Village Hall in the executive session room. And then secondly, very exciting, we're going to be having the fourth steering committee meeting for the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. So that's tomorrow morning here at Village Hall at 10:00 AM. That group has been diligently reviewing the 150-plus-page document that we've received from our consultant, Halsey Levine, and the working group comments will be taken into consideration tomorrow, and hopefully we'll have some revisions before you and the Planning and Zoning Commission very soon.
Great.
Great.
Thank you very much. Anything else to come before the board this evening?
Nope.
At this time, I will request a motion to go into executive session on personnel.
So moved, Emery. Second, Seneca.
Call please.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
And to turn to executive session.
Very good.